Good morning, Portage County. Today, we are about to begin our live coverage for your Portage County Board of Commissioners. We'd like to thank you for joining us today. We have one topic of interest that you may be interested in. Please mark your calendars for an important change in the regular meeting for the Board of Commissioners. There will be no regular Board of Commissioners meeting on Thursday, May 12th. That meeting has been rescheduled and will be held on May 10th at 9:00 a.m. Also, we at the Portager are trying everything possible to enhance our coverage for all of the citizens of Portage County. And so, look forward in the coming weeks for us to give you a sort of an abbreviated type of livestream coverage where you will not have to watch an entire two-hour meeting for our livestreaming, but we will highlight the important events of each meeting for you that we feel that you will be interested in. And we will have a special program. This is now in the infancy works, and we think you're going to like it. So, in the coming weeks, stay tuned and we will tell you more about this new project that the Portager is coming up. So, it's almost time to start the Board of Commissioners meeting. I hope they don't start without me. And once again, thank you for watching and supporting local news at the Portager.
And we're all going to pause to celebrate this weekend.
Yep, that's what we're going to do then.
You are going to go?
Instruction services. This would be one of those parts.
I will be there.
Look at you, all official. I like it.
My team thing shirt.
Looks good, Dwayne.
It's really, really good.
It looks good.
Yeah, you need to get inside that can't dimmer interview.
I did.
Oh, didn't? Good job.
Oh, shoot, it's my watch.
Greetings to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Let's see here. Oh, we have Madonna, also known as Mary Jenkins.
Madonna up first.
Yep. Board of Commissioners moves to approve the April 14, 2022 regular meeting minutes.
I'll second. Roll call.
Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Good morning, Larry.
Good morning. I just have one for you guys this morning. It's a proposal from the Manick Smith Group to manage our AMATs awarded paving program that we had, 2022 for 41.
Board of Commissioners moves to approve the Manick and Smith Group, Inc., and enter into an agreement providing professional services for construction administration for 2022 441 project.
I will second. Roll call.
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Again, thanks for coming.
All right, Mary. Thank you.
Joan.
Good luck, Joan.
Good evening, sir. Bye-bye.
Oh, yes. Are we going to go over Geo Tab first or general entries and resolutions? Pick the page.
Journal tab. Or, no, the Geo Tab.
Geo Tab. Let's go over Geo Tab.
Okay. So, first off, I ran a report on all the users that are on there, and all the ones that are on there is Todd, Riley, David Laird, who aren't on there anymore, Jerry, me, Joanne. That's it. And the first comment, I think, meaning that no one's willing to argue because of this tracker.
We've been paying for it for a couple of years now.
We've been paying for it since 2019.
Yeah.
Then got installed beginning in 2020, and then...
I was going to say, I didn't think it got installed until...
And they're really paying for it. So, some pros about this is we can track their vehicles, we can track the speed, we can see all units idling, cars squaring, what time they are at a different location, if you want to know all that. Another benefit is the trackers can pair with what's which are gas cards, because you can pump into the correct vehicle.
Oh.
And then the number of gallons that the pump fits in the fuel tank. So, if the truck can have 15 gallons and it's pumping 20, we can give notification for it, or if it's permanent, we can give notification for it. I mean, I don't know if that's a big problem. I don't think it's a big problem, but it is a benefit. Another one is it can provide your highest oil odometer readings on that vehicle. Oil change, or the breakdown of people's fuel cards, you have to check the odometer.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. They check the odometer, and then they're...
Oh, really? Wow.
For every vehicle we have, like, um?
How many vehicles?
No, for all the vehicles.
Just, yeah. Or is it just the ones that are leased through Enterprise? Or is this for all?
So, it's for all of them, because we have some purchased vehicles on Enterprise maintenance.
Okay.
So, it's for all that's purchased in Enterprise.
Okay.
And then it can provide information on vehicles that we normally use, like, if we want to downsize or transfer to another department, or combine departments for one vehicle, we can do that based on information. For instance, I have a vehicle and my friend, I don't, like, say, I have one and I never use it, and county administrator needs a vehicle, we can combine based on my usage. I never use mine. And you can get that information on how many times I turn it on, how many times I travel, my own supplier, on this, on Geo Tab.
Yeah. I think the whole purpose, and it comes to my head, Joanne picked up last week, that we did the Geo Tab was because we were so used to having a motor pool that followed up with this, and then it was like, there's going to be no one to control, and we didn't hire anyone. I think we put it under Todd, for some reason, to monitor, because he was over the Enterprise contracts and stuff, which then went to Dave Laird, which I don't even know if Dave Laird knew that that's what that function was, and to control, like, when, for, like, the high mileage, especially because we were leasing.
Right. So...
So, have we had any problems with, that we know of? That we know of? I do have a couple of questions. In particular, I understand that the Geo Tab, that's a tracking device? Okay. What I would like to know is if we just do the gas cards, the gas cards considering you have to enter in the odometer, is there any way that Enterprise can track the vehicle from a safety standpoint, meaning oil changes, tire rotations, you know, those true maintenance of the vehicle through the gas card in lieu of us paying $18 per card per month?
We can. Then we just have to rely on employees to vary the right for your odometer.
And we can have as many different PIN numbers for a fuel card as we need, because some of our employees share vehicles, in particular, the sheriff's department. So, we could have, let's say, one fuel card for that vehicle, and then whatever deputy steps in and takes that vehicle, we just enter their PIN.
And that's how they know.
Okay. And the odometer. Okay. So, an Enterprise could track the needs for, again, tire rotations, oil changes...
Is that how they're doing it now, or are they doing it through the Geo Tab? Is through the odometer entry? Because that's, because I can't imagine they would do that if they have this mechanism. There has to be, I mean, I'm sure they could, but I don't know if they're willing to do that.
To me, the geo tracker is wanting, if you're wanting to know where your employees are and what exactly is going on with that vehicle, that's your geo tracker. But the maintenance is supposed to be yours.
Meaning, so fuel cards in Enterprise, so we're talking about three different programs.
Yeah.
So, Enterprise or Geo Tab can airname all of the other two, and fuel cards can airname all of the other two. They take all, airname all. But no one is really getting notification when they need oil change, because I asked Jerry, she's getting notifications, and she said she's in her car. I don't get the notification. And I'm understanding no one gets notification because no one has the Geo Tab information.
Yeah, but I thought, who's on the list to give Geo Tab information? It was Todd, it was Dave Laird.
Todd, Dave Laird, Joanne, me, and then a girl from Enterprise.
Yes, wow.
Have you ever seen the report?
For Geo Tab?
Yeah.
So, we currently have 84 trackers. Jerry went through and found out that one of the vehicles that had a tracker in there got stolen option, so she found the tracker at the option. And then she found seven of them in Sheriff's Office that got stolen option. And then, we have, so we have 84 trackers, but we really have 23 vehicles. So, no one's keeping up with it. So, I guess my main question is, do we want to continue to do this, and we can maintain and keep up with it, or do we want to get rid of the Geo Tab operator and rely on fuel cards?
My only thing at Geo Tab is if a police car goes, if the, I can't get a hold of the deputy, and they can't, don't know where they are, it's the only tracking device that I'd like to know, where were they last, or where is that car now that I can't get a hold of. That is the only one that I'm really concerned about. The gas card thing sounds reasonable to me.
We don't have to do it for the entire, the entire county. We can do it based on the person, if one person has a tracker.
And at that, I would ask the sheriff what he wants, what his vehicles.
Everyone on there except for Posner, makes a report, water resources, gas oil.
Solid waste?
Solid waste.
Yeah. I think they have a different tracking system.
So, it's, is there recycled trucks? Is there an actual car?
Car. Do they have one?
Apparently, they have two.
They used to have, they purchased one for the deputies, right? But that went back to the sheriff's department.
So, I questioned Jerry on that, and she said that they have test speeds at audiences, and then they have pickup trucks.
Oh, yeah, they do have a truck. If they go out and they can pick up stuff. That's like every, yeah, there is a truck out there now that you said that.
So, we do have, and then we target, we transfer.
So, they manage with them? Because it's some of my... Clearly, no matter what the board decides, we need to monitor better. We need to do a better job of educating the departments, saying you have disability, dot, 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 or...
Well, as of right now, which I'm, because I work right now, because they have, since we're changing from Springs, we're... So, that's what brought all this up? You're switching from Springs?
Oh, yes, we're right.
So, that's what brought all this up, is do we want to keep going, meaning we have getting trackers, have them installed in?
I'd ask those few more questions we have, if the departments want to.
Well, and here's the other thing that I'm going to ask. If we all were supposed to be getting notified, and we weren't, I would go back to Enterprise and say, look, we never got any reports or anything, and see what they can do for that, because clearly, I mean, it wasn't just one person that wasn't getting it. There's multiple people that were not getting the report. So, in basic, in general, it wasn't even working. We were paying for a product that wasn't working, and I don't know, maybe you have to go onto a certain website, but I would have thought that it would have been connected to the emails, but they would have just sent alerts to it.
How do you get it now? Do you get any alerts?
Uh, they just...
You have to go in and seek, seek out your...
You have to go in, log in.
And to seek out your information?
So, they don't just...
They don't just send a, hey, Joan, you're in early morning?
Yeah, apparently, they can send out, I'm not sure about, I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, let's see, what's...
They're not...
Yeah, because let's see what happened with that. And what activity, was there any major alerts other than the sheriff's department sold a hard auction that had a tracker that they didn't know?
He went looking for that.
And he went and got it.
Jerry went through, and here are what we came to what Enterprise had, or Geo Tab had, and noticed that a lot of vehicles are not being tracked. Like, out of, out of our 20 vehicles we have, only 27 are being tracked. Probably because we bought new vehicles, and no one really, no one, no one even heard me, didn't know that they had a tracker on there, replacing, replacing. And then another feature is you can tell if someone, like, disables the tracker, it's not being tracked. Being ignored. And no one really would do that with their system.
Can you get an alert on the fuel card?
For...
Such as if we, let's just say the board decides not to go with the Geo Tab, and in lieu of the Geo Tab, they want to stick with the fuel card, but first of all, educate everybody on the availability of what programs are out there relative to the fuel card. But is there a way that Enterprise could set up an automatic alert that, listen, you've now had 10,000 miles since you last put in the odometer, blah, 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 it's now time for an oil change?
They should.
Can the fuel card do that as well, as in lieu of the Geo Tab, relying on the Geo Alert?
They should.
I think we need all of that confirmed, because why, I mean, you know, I don't say everything needs to be...
Because it sounds like, if we have it through the fuel card, that's the main thing we're looking for. I mean, I don't know how much monitoring we'll have to do as to where employees are located, but then again, I don't run the department, so I think once we verify, first of all, let's find out what products are available and exactly how they actually worked and are supposed to work on our end, and then come back to us with that so that we understand it, because what's going to happen is you're going to start calling around, then they're going to start calling each of us, and we probably need to surprise them at first, and then we'll see what departments, because if we're going to have to switch, now's the time to do it, because...
Yeah, because right now...
Yeah, because we're not on it at all, because they're switching carriers, so now's the time to revisit this, so...
Move on.
Are you wanting to check with the sheriff in particular?
That's the one, is my concern, is if these deputies are someplace that we can't get a hold of them or something, or nothing, I'd like to know where their car is, and maybe they're with it.
But there were other departments that had concerns too, that we'll need to check with. All right. Next, I think we're ready for general...
General measures. In accordance with Section 305.30K, the Ohio Revised Code, this Board Resolution 210396, and the Board's Resolution 210878, the Board of Commissioners acknowledges and approves the county administrator to, approval to direct the auditor's office to pay process to April 14, 2022, bills, ACH payments, layers, general vouchers, and then and out as applicable, contingent on the verification of the reports as presented by the county or auditor, reviewed by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Okay, I will second. Roll call.
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board moves to process April 14, 2022 budget amendments as reviewed and recommended by the Department of Budget and Financial Management.
Okay, I'll second. Roll call.
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Resolutions created, Board moves to create a Fund 5512, PCW, manual distribution replacement.
I will second. Roll call. Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board moves create Fund 5708, STS, treat, plant, headwork, oil filter.
I will second. Roll call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joan. Is Joanne up there?
Yeah. I saw Joanne.
Good morning, Joanne.
I'm waiting for somebody to come out, sorry. Well, I don't even need to really sit down. I've got one resolution for you today, it's proof pass.
There you go. Board of Commissioners moves to agree to set the request for proposal date, visitation aid services for Portage County Job and Family Services Department.
I will second. Roll call.
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joan. Is Joanne up there?
Yeah. I saw Joanne.
Good morning, Joanne.
I'm waiting for somebody to come out, sorry. Well, I don't even need to really sit down. I've got one resolution for you today, it's proof pass.
There you go. Board of Commissioners moves to agree to set the request for proposal date, visitation aid services for Portage County Job and Family Services Department.
I will second. Roll call.
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Great to see you.
Thank you.
All right. Jobs and Family Services.
Have a good one. Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello. You ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. First item I have under my discussions was the January, February data report, but I saw that you might have questioned as far as changes on page one, under childcare, we saw a reduction in children in need of subsidized childcare from January to February.
Yeah.
And it is our hope that that's because, well, it would be polar opposite. We hope that we would have a need because of employment, so we're not really sure why there's a decrease. We're going to kind of watch that number as we move forward.
Well, you know, it's funny you say that, Kelly, Joanne, because there's a couple of them that went down and had their, and I'm like, what? I would thought it would have been reversed, so January would have been...
January is a shorter month, too.
Well, and that's what I was going to say, it's only got 28 days, something, and maybe that affects the health.
Yeah. Well, we're going to watch that, just because that's a little bit of an increase or a decrease. On page two, also, there were about 400 less calls in our customer service center, which is a good thing, from January to February. We correlate that to after the holidays, December, people tend to spike the calls because follow up over the holidays and see what's going on. So, it is a good thing, though, that we have less calls.
Why do we have, and take appointments, walk-ins? Are they all being done by phone now, or?
It's by choice. So, again, we still have residents that are preferring teleservices, so it'd be by choice, but anyone can walk in.
There was no walk-ins between January and February?
No, if they choose to, they can. They still come into the lobby to scan and draw up their applications, but most are still doing telework. Page three, I just wanted to say that the state unemployment rates came out, and so March rates for Ohio were 4.1%. In the United States, unemployment is 3.6. We didn't get our March rates reported yet, but we're really in line with where the state is at with unemployment.
Yeah, it's right around, or the 4.6, I saw something. Yeah. And then what about the total number of business services provided? Because that dropped drastically, too, from 538 in January to 315 in February.
And that's all based on employers outreach to us and asking, can you post? Can you do some work? You know, can we meet with you? So, that would be employer-based, so we're watching that, too. That could also be because they're gaining, you know, employees into their companies, and the needs aren't as great, so...
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see March because of such a fluctuation there.
And there's that word, the word schools is under total number of hiring events, and so it should have been three, but we actually, in hiring events in the month of February, we were at To Windham twice, and Rootstown High Schools, and those were geared towards young people, so I just wanted to make reference to that. On page four, I didn't see any significant changes there. The SNAP ENT participation rate, where you see in January, there's a waiver, there is a federal waiver that we were not required to work with individuals on food assistance benefits because of pandemic, so that waiver has since been lifted, and we're working to transition those folks into our new connections program, so we're going to really assess what their needs are and report in that space with helping them get back into the employment scene. So, that's why you see waiver in January, and then we're calling people in and assessing them now. Okay. And then in children's services, I'm going to highlight APS, adult protective cases, too. So, we had, in February, we assigned 13 cases to our social worker on the adult protective side, and as far as children in custody, at the end of February, we had 203 kiddos in care, as of this Monday, 193. So, those were just the variances that I wanted to share with you, unless you had any follow-up questions on the data report, or answered. And then the next item is just a discussion. We're really excited that Ohio Department of Job and Family Services invited Portage County, Perry County, Franklin County, Montgomery County, and Gallya County to participate in cohort two of what's called the Benefit Bridge Pilot Program. We actually have a call with the state and those other counties tomorrow, and if we move forward as a pilot program, we would be assisting individuals who move towards gainful employment, but oftentimes, when individuals get employment, their benefits change, so their food stamps might decrease.
Yes.
Their insurance could go away if they're in subsidized housing, their rent may go up. So, it's not that we don't want to support self-sufficiency, that's the purpose, is to get individuals off of public welfare into self-sufficiency. But this Benefit Bridge is in recognition of sometimes there's a cliff, and instead of being able to support individuals, people fall off, and the transition is not as seamless as we like it to be.
Well, and it's almost like it's punitive to them to go out and get a job, because, okay, you got a job now, congratulations, but we're cutting $400 of your food stamps. And like you said, I always thought there should have been a transition phase of six months, and I think about, like, single mothers and stuff. I mean, that's a lot of money, and that's the first thing they cut, is like the food stamps and all those things.
How quickly can they cut it? If I get a job Monday, I start Monday.
The next month. If they, if they take action, there's a cutoff period, so say if it's before a cutoff period, it could impact the following month. If it's afterwards, it would be the month after, but, I mean, we take action, we have 10 days to take action on anything, so it happens quickly. If we move forward with this, they're going to offer these, our, these counties extratonic and GRF funding from the state to...
TANF.
TANF, temporary assistance for needy families, it's federal dollars. They do want the Benefit Bridge team and pilots to, like, work with peer mentors, case managers, which we have, finance and budgeting, which is a great thing.
Yes.
And career coaching, and then have a therapist component to it, because some people are dealing with mental health stuff as well. So, this is the team they want the counties to build, and I'm believing they're going to subsidize us if we move forward. So, I'll update you next meeting. We have our session tomorrow with the state, but I said yes, I, we want to be a part of this pilot program.
So, the subject we were just talking about, I get a job and then gone, that's been forever. Has anybody done anything or pushed to try to get some, a 30-day or 60-day, get a couple paychecks under your belt before you take everything away from them?
Well, and that's all federal-based, so if, it's federal and state. So, if the state right now is saying, we want to test the waters and see if this can work, I think it's exciting, because then they can advocate for change in policy. If state policy changes, then, and they can influence federal, right, then we wouldn't have to be mandated to take that action right away. I think it's the right thing to provide that safety.
It is. I'm just surprised it's not there, after all this...
And you know, I probably, I like that they have the mental health component, because you know what? I mean, it's scary for a lot of people. I mean, some of these folks are generation after generation on the system, and they do, they have anxiety, and, I mean, and they're so used to scrambling all the time, and then once they get adjusted, it's an adjustment, it's a life change for a lot of them.
Absolutely. We at JFS, Portage JFS, we've been working on a poverty simulation. It was a kit we got from Minnesota three years ago when COVID happened. We're going to propose, we're going to present it to you, but we want to have this experience for our private sector employers and community partners to understand what a month and a life of somebody on assistance is like.
Yes.
And I think we can interface this new piece into this full-day experience, so I wanted to present that to you here in the next month or so, so I think it's a good tie-in if we can move forward.
And I think time management is also, not only buggy, but time management, because the, it may happen lots of time, and then you have to try to get them set in a mindset where you have to be organized and something. I think it's a challenge for them.
Yeah, absolutely. And let me just make note, when you talked about stressors, when you have lack of transportation for families, especially single families, if you think the amount of time to get on public transit, you have to take a child to childcare per se, then you would have to get back on a bus to get to your employer, well, the hours just to get your kids to daycare and to work, so understanding those nuances is really important, too.
And like you said, I think they easily are overwhelmed, because, like I said, they're not used to a structure necessarily, so the challenge is, okay.
you have to take a child to childcare per se, then you would have to get back on a bus to get to your employer. Well, the hours just to get your kids to daycare and to work. So understanding those nuances is really important, too.
And like you said, I think they easily are overwhelmed, because, like I said, they're not used to a structure necessarily. So the challenge is.
Okay. So I just wanted to let you know, we're gonna have that meeting tomorrow. Then another item that I had was, I think Joanne might have already presented it, but I talked to you about it as far as the visitation concerns.
Yes, we just passed the request for proposal.
And the county graciously has allowed us to use the annex voting through July to do some temporary visits. And so we're working on some stuff.
Great.
Yep.
Great.
Thank you so much. And so Sue's gonna talk about a fiscal transfer. The other three, I talked to you about it. I was, I should have presented the resolution last time, so you already have the background. It's just now we need to pass the resolutions on those.
Before we move forward, I forget, did, did I do okay in the OPAM? Because I was having a difficulty, it wouldn't let me, like, sign on my computer, it wouldn't let me type in. But then I clicked and it said that I had signed, so.
I don't know, because now I got knocked out of the system, so I'll circle back to you, because there's a technical issue. It's all that you know. It's the state system, I'm so sorry.
I feel your pain now, I just wanted you to know that.
I do.
Okay.
All right, the first, yeah, the first resolution is just our regular monthly share trust resolution for child support.
Board moves to transfer fund 1414, Child Support Administration, to Fund 1410, Systems Fund.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Second roll call?
Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board moves to enter an agreement between Portage County Board of Commissioners on behalf of Portage County Jobs and Family Services and Portage County Sheriff.
Before I second this, I saw on this resolution, Kelly Jo, it said here, let me look at it. This is the second one. It says one or more sheriff deputies, isn't it approved for one and a half? Isn't there one and a half in there? Okay. Because I, I just wondered, because when I looked at the compensation of $154,000, I'm thinking, my God, it better be for more than one person. But in the resolution, it just says one or more sheriff deputies. So I'm assuming we're still doing the one and a half.
Yeah, the contract will have the one and a half.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I'll second, roll call?
Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board moves to enter to amendment number four and five between Portage County Board of Commissioners on behalf of Portage County Jobs and Family Services and Northeast Ohio Consortium Council of Government and Portage County Development Board.
Okay, I will second, roll call?
Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes. And Kelly Jo, I have a question on that. Now that we just approved it. It said it only goes through March 31st, 2022. Why are, why are we, is, is this a lag on knock call?
Yeah.
Because I'm like.
He hasn't. He, he needs to RFP it, and he has to, I mean, yes, we just keep having to extend it, so.
Okay, I will note that, because I, and, and the same thing for the next one, too.
Yes, and both are the same, same area.
Okay, I will get that across, thank you. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
You gotta vote. Did you vote? We do the vote.
For number four is.
No, okay.
Second?
Board.
I don't have a motion.
On what, number four, we have done, we've done, we've did, okay. Board Commissioners moves to enter to agreement number three, four, and five between Portage County Board of Commissioners on behalf of Portage County Jobs and Family Services and Northeast Ohio Consortium Council of Government and Family and Community Services, Inc. for the Comprehensive Case Management Employee Program, CCMET.
Okay, I will second, roll call?
Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes. Can you shoot me an email on what you've done on that? Because.
Yeah, I will.
This is not acceptable to me. I mean, yeah.
It's a bit of a, like, just say.
Oh.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies, have a great day.
Thanks, guys, have a good day.
Hi.
Hi, hi. Who is next?
I'm Dana.
H I, H I. H I. Hello, hello, hello. All right. Let's see here, what we got today.
Last week, we started talking about the alone and retired retirees.
Yes.
And there were 40.
Forty-six.
Forty-six?
I said 41, but actually, we're down between general fund and non-general fund. Out of the 41, 27 for general fund.
You know what, but there was, what, 46? But it included part-timers that were retire, retire. I think the list.
The initial number.
The initial number, okay. I just wanna clarify that.
Yeah.
And then if you break it down to just the general fund, it's 27?
Twenty-seven.
And so hypothetically, what, if we attached a dollar figure to that?
If we, let's say, if all 27 were eligible for the program come October, and let's just say they took the very max, which is 80 hours of sick leave that they get out at 60% of the hourly wage, we're looking just under $38,000. So it's actually 37,693.
So it's, it's very miniscule compared to.
What, and what's the total volume of employees we're speaking of?
Just general fund.
General fund was, what, 27?
No, no, total. The total population base of our employees.
So that, over a thousand?
Yeah.
It's a little over a thousand. I caught payroll yesterday, I don't like that. So it's very miniscule, and that's why I, I think it is a good perk. It doesn't impact a lot of people, but I, I think it's an incentive, and especially with the workforce issues we're having, it might be a good club to not only keep the retire, retires, because we're not finding people to replace them, but also it might be an incentive for someone to retire and to come back. Because, you know, as, as you see every week, we've got sheets full of resignations and, you know, people moving and, I don't know. I, I think it's a very small cost. And I don't understand why they're not included in it. It's not like if they, if they leave again, they get to cash out, because then it's just a termination. So this is just while they're working. And they earn 4.6 hours of sick time per paycheck, minus 26. I think it comes up to 119 hours a year if they don't take any sick time. But with COVID and stuff, I really don't, I mean, like you said, that is the worst case scenario.
Yeah, that is, if they're not eligible, it takes the max.
Take max.
Yeah.
I, I'll have to agree with Sabrina on that, too. I think that would be, and I've had multiple people speak to me as well. It's mostly, it seems like it's sheriff's deputies, because a lot of retirees rehire. So I, I would be for, for that.
Yeah, and I know Bishop Klein was in favor as well, and she was surprised that it did not include them.
And I can't tell you why, it was years ago, but the policy was like.
Well, you think, it's based on the Ohio Revised Code, that's, that's normally what it is. But it also gives you the caveat that we can. And like I said, it's not like, you know, and plus, you know, we always do it around October, so it's around holidays and stuff. We're on a trial and error, whatever. So it's sort of gives them an incentive, not necessarily to come to work sick, but for people that are blessed not to be sick or have to. So.
So you wanna bring something back?
Yeah, so, yeah, if it's only agreements and changes, then, yeah.
And I looked at the policy that you updated, the draft, and, and basically, you just removed the rehire-retires and left it as part-timers seasonal.
Yes, yes. So the part-timers would include the retire-rehires. So what we're talking about is the 27.
So will you bring a journal entry back then next week?
I will bring a resolution.
A resolution? Okay, close it up.
Do you have the draft ready?
Well, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't.
Oh.
Sorry.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay.
Let's bring it back next.
And according to the section 305.30 of Ohio Revised Code, this board, Board's Resolution 210396, Part Nine, Board Commissioners and Lovers' Approve, the County Administrator to Approve, Approval Two, Approve the Job Description for New Positions, Gesa Technician for Portage County Water and Resources Department.
I'll second that, roll call?
Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board authorized the transfer of Jack Cortelli, Laborer, Vehicle Mechanic, new position effective May 2nd, 2022. Mister, since Mr. Corelli is current employee, pre-employment screening is not required. Mr. Corelli will receive 120-day probationary period per current CBA.
So that's for that new position?
Yeah.
Oh, very good. I'll second that, I'll second that, roll call, Amy?
Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board authorized a seven-day internal posting, bargaining position, Labor Vacated by Jack Corte, Courtro?
Castle.
Castle. Portage County Water Resources, an external posting, if no internal post is made.
I'll second, roll call?
Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board moves to accept the resignation of Karen Kabinsky, Social Worker Three for Portage County Department of Jobs and Family Services, effective April 22, 2022.
Okay, I will second, roll call?
Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board authorizes a three-day internal post of bargaining position, Social Worker Three, Vacated by Karen Kabinsky, Portage County Jobs and Family Services, without external posting, if no internal appointment is made.
I'll second, roll call?
Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board authorizes the promotion of John Vudella, Temporary Training Specialist Status, Permanent Training Specialist, effective April 21st, 2022. On June 11th, 2018, Mr. Vudella was placed on temporary work level, a Temporary Training Specialist. However, he had, however, after exceeding performance expectations, Mr. Vudella is being recommended for Permanent Training Specialist Position.
So it seems to me, these temporaries for JFS are sort of like a feeder group to her. And because once they pass, then.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, okay. I will second, roll call, Amy?
Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board moves to authorize the promotion of Donna Fortney for interim Business Specialist Supervisor and Permanent Business Supervisor, effective April 21st, 2022. On July 27th, 2020, Mr. Fortney was placed on interim status. However, after exceeding performance expectations, Ms. Fortney is being recommended Permanent Business Service Supervisor Position.
Can you say that again? I'm just kidding, it's a long one. I'll second, roll call? Tell you.
I don't talk like that.
Oh.
Board moves the revision of the following bargaining position, job descriptions for Portage County Jobs and Family Services. Social Services Worker Three, Group Home. Social Serv, Social Service Worker, Worker Three, Group Home, Part-Time. Social Services Worker Three, Social Worker Three, On Call.
Okay, I will second, roll call?
Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Board moves to approve the anniversary probationary step increase for the following non-bargaining employees. April Keller, JFS, CSEA Attorney, effective April 4th, 2022. Leslie Lu, Jobs and Family Services Specialist, effective April 5th, 2022. Glenn Cooper, Record Management and Print, Printer, Print Shop, effective April 5th, 2022. Kia Rutledge, Planning Manager, Water Resources, effective April 9th, 2022. George Slavinsky, Jobs and Family Services Specialist, effective April 26th, 2022. Kelly Jo Jeffries, Jobs and Family Services Director, effective April 28th, 2022. And Janine Simke, Simke?
Simke.
Permanent Tech, Simpat, Permanent Technician Two, effective May 1st, 2022.
I'll second, roll call?
Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
According to the Ohio Revised Code 121.22G1, Board of Commissioners move into executive session to discuss compensation of a public employee.
I'll second, roll call?
Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina?
Yes.
Thank you. Please give us the room, please.
Okay, Portagers, Board of Commissioners are going into a brief executive session to discuss personnel issues. I have one point of clarification for you. At the beginning, I mentioned to you that we are going to start plans for giving you an enhanced version of the live stream coverages of our communities that we cover now. To clarify this, we will still give you a full live stream coverage of all of the meetings that we presently cover. However, the enhanced version will give those of you that are time-limited to view a special program that we will put together for you so you don't have to watch the entire two-hour meeting or two-and-a-half-hour meeting, whatever, of whatever community we're covering. So this is going to be an additional program, and I think you're going to like it. Also, Portage County, for those of you, especially in our Suffolk viewing area, the Portager will begin live stream coverage this next Tuesday. So we will be doing the, the coverage next Tuesday. So fry up the bacon and ham and eggs and get out the coffee. And that's, that coverage will begin at 7:00 AM this coming Tuesday. And then therefore, every fourth Tuesday of the month, we will cover the Suffolk Township Board of Trustees. I think you're going to like it. Suffolk is a beautiful community, and it's well-developed for both business and the rural comforts that we provide for Portage County. So once again, thank you for supporting and watching your local news here at the Portager. And if you have any questions whatsoever, contact Ben at theportager. That's Ben, B E N, at theportager.com. And we're now going to hang on here for a second, keep those dials locked in until we're ready to resume live coverage of your Portage County Board of Commissioners.
That's on.
So you're just leaving it on?
What's that?
You should be putting it on during the breaks.
I am, it's on. Yeah, I just, well, first of all, I don't know how to pause it. I don't know.
You know, when I do live videos, there, there is a delay. You'll, the only way to do it is to stop the video and do part two, part three.
Yeah, I can't do that. I don't know how to do it. Brian told me to do it one time, and I came out here and I did it, and shut the whole phone off.
Yeah.
And so I had to shut the whole thing back on again. And then people, they think that when the phone goes off, that, that's it. You know, they don't know, especially those that tune in, you know, after I've announced that they're, they're on the executive session. So I'm just, I'm just gonna leave that right there and just wait, and wait for them to resume. So you do the same thing, that you just keep it going?
Well, when I do a live video, like for my side hustle, myself, I have a work. I will do a live video, and if I'm making a recipe, and that recipe has to cook in the microwave for 10 minutes, I am not gonna be on for 10 minutes while that cooks.
I see.
So I just say, okay, we'll come back and we'll show you the finished product.
Well, there you go. Well, that's just basically what you did, you did the story, and I haven't had a special announcement, I haven't made.
But I mean, I stopped it and I started doing it.
So you do stop it and then start it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I tried to watch it. About a year ago, I tried to watch a Facebook feed, and it seemed to be in a lot of different parts, and.
Well, I'm just afraid of people.
It wasn't a good follow.
Well, one thing that I know broadcasters usually like to avoid is a thing, especially radio, is a thing called dead air, where you have no sound, and people think that they lost the signal and they'll change the station.
Uh-huh.
So that's why they avoid dead air.
Got it.
So.
I'm still learning this.
Now, the thing about watching the replay on a live stream, you could just pass forward through the order.
Right, right. And that's what we're gonna do. Then, then, our publisher brought this up to me, that, you know, there's a lot of folks out there, especially farmers in the summertime, where they have to get out into their fields, and they've got to tend their crops and their animals and stuff. And they, they don't have time to watch two, two-and-a-half-hour livestream of their township recipes, meetings and stuff. So what we're going to do, and hopefully I can do this, is, you know, get a copy of the minutes of every meeting that I film and just highlight the important facts that I think is important to the community. And then eventually, I will, like, I'm leaving, like, Thursday, 8:00 PM, like, prime time. You know, where people will be able to zoom in or to tune in on a special segment for me giving them the highlights of the meetings that I covered throughout the week.
You know, like, returning to the journalist. The journalist.
You know what, I.
We do, that's what we do.
And you went to school for four years without doing that thing yet.
Yeah.
I've always been a newsie. I, I mean, when I was 12 years old, I had my first paper route with the Red Currier, and I remember sitting there on these skids and reading the paper before I made my delivery.
So my live streaming be different from what you're doing now?
What's that?
You said you got, next week, you're gonna start live streaming. How a lot be different from what you're doing now?
It's exactly what we're doing now. We're gonna start live streaming, we're gonna keep live streaming. We're just gonna give them an enhanced, compacted version of that.
Yeah, which is basically what we do in our stories, so. But, yeah, we did start a new reporter, so we're up to three now.
Good, good.
Um, yeah, and the interesting thing about this guy is that his interview, he called, for the New York Sheriff, the Journal, and asked him some questions about the union.
What?
About our union.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That union's good for you guys.
Yeah, well, you know, the funny thing is, Ben reached out to me the day of my live show, and he's like, can I buy you guys a round of drinks? And I'm like, Ben likes to want, you know, yeah, sure, I'm sure it's a virtual drink. And I just said, yeah, sure. And, um, or just thumbs up. And he's like, okay, I set up a table for you guys at the address.
Right.
So I'm like, all right, Nick, and I told her that some of our ex-employees, ex, um, your committee members, hey, you're in front of us. So you come and you drink on your account. Anybody else who wants to come to the address, it's just, well, you're on your own dollar. And if anybody gets anything other than drinks, then it's on your own dollar, so.
I'm thinking about drinking right now. Before I go. Now, you know, back when Dick's family ran the Record Courier, you didn't have to worry about it. You took care of the guys.
Well, no, it was more than that. David did some things very much away from the legal. He actually corrected fire, which is really legal. But, and the pattern came as equally crappy, but one thing that they felt very sternly about is that you needed an adequate number of undercover community to come out and bring these kind of scale. And what that means is that, um, you've got Beacon Journal over here. But Beacon Journal used to cover five county areas. But now, they own all the counties in Stark County. So they use those counties for Stark County property. They own the record, and Portage County, so we provide the Portage County record. So they own the history of the record, so they provide their, um, moisture, main county property. And, you know.
Things have changed so much today.
So it's like, you know.
Whereas you have, like, USA Today, the Beacon, the Record Courier, more like Ohio today.
Okay, well, the USA Today is the USA Today's network.
But I'm saying, the other thing is, source stories from all.
Well, we used to get coverage from Columbus Bureau. Now we have Columbus Dispatch to provide our state coverage. We have other USA Today papers to provide national coverage instead of the AP. That I get. But, um, but it's also how you can have freelance reporters to cover a county in a paper record or a magazine. You know, you basically tell those reporters, don't worry about townships. Don't worry about villages, um, you know, and.
And that's where I, since I've been covering the four townships, the little townships, you know, the, a leaky urinal in a two-hundred-year-old building is just as important to these people that live in these townships that are jet flying over top of their, their main highway and into their cornfields, you know? It's just, the townships need coverage, and they gotta know what's going on. And they all can't, they don't have the time.
The news guild will tell you that since, um, I don't, in the last ten years, I think it is, half, the number of reporters in this country has been cutting down.
Because internet.
And, well, because of these big corporations buying up the papers to track us down. And, um, and so there was a community where the newspapers shut down, and the local officials in that community raised their own salaries by like seventy-five percent. It's not something that can happen in Ohio because any salaries that they approve for elected positions, they approve them for physician, not for themselves.
Got it.
So it's like, and they have to do it a certain number of months, or they even put out petitions because somebody runs for that seat and they want salaries. And, um, but it's, they're not really raising their own salaries. But in this state, I guess they could do that. And it's like, they did it because they could, because nobody was watching them. And so corruption is out there. So it's not as important. It's like, you know, I mean, the only thing that would like is going to present as the only soft people news because not getting better.
Yeah, you're right.
Getting better.
Yeah, it is, it will be.
And, um, and some people still rely on us as the paper record.
Of course.
And, um, so, and, um.
But I do see a large, large increase in, in what I'm doing today.
Yeah.
So much. It's not different, but it's just so, it's just so convenient for folks. I love the days, the days when my wife and I would sit on the couch and we would put Beacon Journal and the Record Courier between us, and we would have our coffee, and we would spend two hours, and we read every story and every page of both papers, you know, and we enjoyed it. That was the start of our day, was a live paper turn.
What I have noticed is that the Record Courier doesn't have, like, normal ads. I'm showing a couch where I'm looking for an employee of this description.
That's because of the, that is, it's Craigslist. Why should you pay for an ad last night when Craigslist will put one up for you for free? When Indeed will put one up for you for free, you know, and, uh.
Okay, I didn't know those things were free.
Oh, yeah, 'cause I don't, I'm not, you know, big on internet stuff.
I mean, I can do a lot, but things like that, Facebook. I respond to my sister-in-law's post, but I don't post them. The one time I put something on Facebook, I really think such and such a stupid politician should be dead, and they were like, don't ever do that again.
You know what? You gotta develop a thick skin if you're gonna be on social media.
Yeah, and I don't, and I don't want all my personal information on the ad.
Um, I don't put a lot of personal information. I mean, I'll put, like, little frustrations, like, I have a new phone. And my roommate texts me Wednesday night and said, did you know we had set up new voicemails on our new phones? I'm like, no, I didn't do that. And I looked there, and I looked at the voicemail, and they'd give me, they'd set up voicemail. And I thought, all my voicemails were gone. And I was so upset, and I was like, so dramatic about it. I'll never hear my dad's voicemail, 'cause I saved those voicemails.
Yeah.
And, um.
Well, during the twenty-twenty election cycle, I was on Facebook, and I got, I got so disgusted at listening to the people. My friends bad-mouthed me. I mean, I leaned to the right most of the issues, and my friends that leaned to the right, all of a sudden, they go to the left, the center, and they called me filthy names and threatened my family.
I know that there are some people who take that really personally. My personal feeling is, I will criticize the elected official all day long because he put himself in that position.
Exactly, exactly.
You, as a voter, have the right to support whoever you want to support.
And without intimidation.
Yeah, and I, I have, I will never vote shame anybody, 'cause I haven't voted. And it's like, you know, I had people confront me and say, you voted for this person, and I told them I didn't vote for that person. I voted third party.
Yeah.
Because I have a tendency, if I don't, if one vote is their matter, to remove oneself from the decision by voting third party. It's a protest vote.
Right.
From like, any name I need, uh, who deserves my protest vote, you know?
Yes, yep, yep.
And, um.
Well, you know, a good, a good strategy is, if you, you can do this, like, if you're a Republican and you want a Democrat to win, like, you know, this, this next Senate thing here. I want, I want a certain Democrat to win for, for this Senate race. So what would I do naturally? What should I do? I would wanna vote in a Republican primary for the person that's least going to be successful to run against.
Actually, what I did in the twenty-sixteen primary is I did support John Kasich.
So did I, 'cause I did one, oh, I did one.
I did not think that John Kasich was going to win the Republican primary. However, I was basically, at that point, I was as close to a never-Trump Republican as I could be. Because I'm really moderate and leans to the left, but I never liked Trump. I never liked him, and I thought he was a woman, and I still think that. So I thought, if he did, I'd trump the nomination.
From Ohio, a very important state.
Where they were having the Republican convention, that they would, the Republican Party would be forced to nominate a real conservative.
Right.
And I didn't, I wasn't gonna support that candidate in their number. But I thought, my Republican friends deserve a conservative vote. And I didn't see how.
Oh, yeah, her is a real conservative.
And, um, and it's like, you know, it didn't work. And I almost tempted to vote in the Republican primary because.
Yeah, they're least likely to be a Republican, right? Like, I don't, the good side of it was, 'cause I'm not a Republican, was that, um, I got on my surveys about, oh, do you support President Trump? Isn't he the most wonderful president in the world? And I wrote in all my comments about how much I disliked him, you know, I get the.
Oh, I would take the online surveys and I would fill them out.
Male ones.
You know, the ones that weren't on the media. So I did a fake username, and I called it, I'm a reporter. Yeah.
And then they had, they paid for the postage to send it back to.
Yeah.
Even it was online.
That was the only upside of being a Republican for a while. But I actually, um, you know, it's a thing where some of the Republicans that are running for some of the office for governor for Senate are better than others. And some of them scare me to my core. And so it's like, I'm almost tempted to support Dolan because I don't like JD Vans.
Yeah, they're dumb, of course.
You know, Jim Renese.
I haven't seen any ads from him recently.
Jim Renese's here. And it's just.
You would think some of the people would know better to just say some of the things they're saying out in public. And paying to broadcast.
Why is it, I mean, maybe you can.
Okay, Portage County, I hope you're still with us. We're going back into re-adjournment from our executive session. A little longer than we expected, but I'm sure it was excitement filled. Now we introduce you to.
Oh, there's Bruce.
County Board of Commissioners.
It's about time you get up.
I see you got this up there so I can talk now.
I'll make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Roll call?
Sabrina?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
No action?
No action.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Dave. Thanks, Janet.
Tony Administrator.
So real quick, our just grant related, one is accepting the grant award for twenty-five hundred for relative to the dog warding, and the other is ARPA fund related. So, and lieu of keeping all money in ARPA, which is restricted.
Yes.
We can switch it up for revenue loss of ten million, and if we just take the standard, it's easy, done.
Right.
Yeah.
Great.
Yep.
Board Commissioners move to accept the award in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars from Ohio Pet Fund Grant Program on behalf of Portage County Dog Warding.
Okay, I'll second roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes.
Board Commissioners authorize all actions necessary to accept the U.S. Department of Treasury, American Rescue Plan Act, state and local fiscal recovery funds, and elected, elects to accept the standard allowance of ten million dollars in revenue loss.
I'll second roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes.
That's it, Tony Administrator?
Yeah, we're gonna miss the lead.
That's it. Thank you.
Board Commissioners move to acknowledge the receipt of the Kendall deposition report, intake report of April, for April fourth, two thousand twenty-two through April tenth, two thousand twenty-two, as presented by Chief Dog Ward, Dave McIntyre.
I'll, I'll second roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes.
Board Commissioners move, acknowledges the receipt of Portage County Investment Reconciliation for the month of March, two thousand twenty-two, revised August, two thousand, August, revised on August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, as presented by the County Auditor and the County Treasurer.
I will second roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes.
Board Commissioners acknowledge the receipt of the April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, certificate of the auditor, County Auditor, and the total annual appropriations for each fund do not exceed the official estimated resources for fiscal year beginning January first, two thousand twenty-two, as presented by the Portage County Auditor.
I'll second roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes.
Board Commissioners approves the appointment to serve on the Portage County Transportation and Treatment District, TID, the following, Claudia Armin, Glenn Braska, Brad Earhart, Michael Marazzi, and John Kovac.
I'll second roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes.
Board Commissioners declares canine felon is not needed for use of Portage County Sheriff's Office. Authorize the sale of Portage County personal property, Deputy Two, Deputy Robert Colvin.
Yeah, it's not that he's not needed, he's retirement age.
He's retired.
He's eight years old.
He's retired.
Poor felon, he gets to retire at eight. I want his job.
And he said, and he's, he said he's gonna spend the rest of his life playing with kids.
Aww, eating snacks.
Which you wouldn't have been allowed to do before.
No.
You're not allowed to play, and no toys.
Good for him. I'll second roll call, Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes.
Board Commissioners hereby removes the loan requirements in the journal entry number ten, passed March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, based on Chaylerville Township Resolution twenty-two-two-dash-zero-one, dedicated to property for Stansky House, Snicky House, ninety-eight-eighty, State Route forty-four, Ravenna, Ohio, four-four-two-six-six, to be used as parking.
I will second, yep, that was an ad. Roll call?
Tony?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes. Yeah, you, I was just gonna say, Miss Number Three, which is the Board of Commissioners.
Oh, I get it.
Resolutions twenty-two-dash-zero-two-six-zero, adopting April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, Portage County Board of Commissioners appointment of Brian Hupp to the Tax Incentive Review Council for the city of Ravenna.
Second.
Roll call?
Sabrina?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes, yeah, come to that, thank you.
All right. Oh, and then next Tuesday is our, our meeting, second meeting for the week or the month, on a Tuesday meeting. Is there anything that we need to meet for? Vicky's not gonna be back for then. I don't, I don't have anything. Is there anything, Michelle, that you can think of?
I will be on vacation.
So I guess we're not gonna have it next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, so we're, Thursday, we're going to the training. Isn't it?
No, that's not till May.
Oh, that's May, okay. All right, so no meeting at all next Tuesday?
No, no meeting next Tuesday. That's before.
Tuesday, Thursday.
Or Tuesday, yeah.
Is your Land Bank Conference next Thursday, Sabrina Albede?
Yes, I will be gone Thursday and Friday next Tuesday. I'll be in Cleveland for the Land Bank Conference. Dan is actually one of the speakers, our Land Bank Executive. So I'm going up there to support him, and just full eye pet full of Land Bank knowledge. Is there anything else to come before, oh, never mind, we'll have to recess till eleven. Is there any public comment? No? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and recess till eleven and see if there's any public comment, and we'll go from there.
As a sheriff's dog, think of all the nasty things you'd have to sniff to be able to retire at eight years old.
Wow.
So they gave them the dog?
Yes, they have. These are training ready.
I had a teenage son, that was probably pretty tragic for me.
That's.
Like, selling an old locker room.
That's the sad least, yeah.
Plug-ins in his room, I'm like, ooh. He's, oh, that's, that's, that's flowers on him, face so girly, get him out of here. Oh, yeah, that was worth it in your tin sauce.
So, so you'll be gone on Thursday, but you're still meeting, because Vicky will be back.
Oh, right, yes. So probably nothing too exciting Thursday, but yeah, yeah, I will be gone to the Land Bank Conference. I will be up there in Cleveland. I will be up there in Cleveland, um, Thursday and Friday.
Did you guys make a decision on the, um, airport consultant?
We did.
Okay, who did you hire?
Um, actually, that's still in the works, because that was just to pick the consultant based on the qualifications, so now is when we'll get the pricing and everything back.
Right.
But we picked the first one, it was AM...
AMG.
I'll tell you.
A airport resource...
It's AMCG, I think it is. Okay, the first one. And then the runner-up was Baldwin, so, yeah.
I'll listen to the recording.
Yep, yep. Okay, all right. See you at eleven.
And there we go, Portage County, Board of Commissioners, recess until eleven o'clock. Stay tuned to the Portager at the Suffield Township Board of Trustees, remember, this coming Tuesday at seven o'clock a.m. Until then, we'll see you and thank you for supporting the Portager.